The School Board of Independent School District 624, would the clerk please call the rule? Chapman?
Here.
Fahy?
Here.
It's been a long day. Kimbo?
Here.
Mullin?
Here.
Newberg?
Here.
Newmaster? And Wilson?
Here.
All right, thank you.
Did you say Newmaster?
She did.
Yes, yes.
Here, I heard it too.
All right, we'll go to our discussion item B1, and that's an update on school board superintendent goals and strategic plan priorities. Dr. Lovett.
Madam Chair members of the school board, in the interest of time this evening, given the fact that the principals are here, we have some conversations with you, we'll have no presentation, but we'd be happy to respond to any questions on the updates to the strategic plan and school board superintendent goals.
Very good. Anybody have any questions or discussion about the updated strategic plan and goals? All right, we have room assignments for our meetings with the principals. Here is my thoughts on both timing and what we're going to do when we come back here. We have fifty, five zero minutes up in our rooms with our principals. For those of us who have two liaison schools, about twenty-five minutes with each school. Some of you have three, but I understand you've met with your third liaison assignment ahead of time, so you won't have to do that here. When we get back here, we will have, per person, five point seven minutes to talk. But instead of going around and having everybody present on their individual schools, what I'm going to do is break it into two topics. Number one, just let's talk and share about the positives, the accomplishments, the good things that you learned about what are going on in your liaison schools. Hopefully, that'll be the majority of the time. And then we'll have a second period of time, if you've learned about any challenges, focus areas, areas for improvements in our schools, we can then talk about them. And hopefully, we can do that all in the allotted time, which would be no more than five point seven minutes for each board member. That sound good? All right, everybody knows where they're going? We're off.
I think I'll just turn this off again. I'm not calling this thing.
You're down here.
Am I?
I thought I saw you down here.
Missing on the board.
George and, um...
It's here.
Yeah, Marge is over there. Oh, George is there, okay. Yeah, so we're all here.
Okay.
Well, Marge is slipping out now.
Well, she was here a second ago, so she's around here.
Yeah. She's pretty, she's so impressive.
All right, let's get started again. You're all dressed up. Looking for... All right, why don't we first take an opportunity to share the really good news? We heard about our liaison schools, the partnerships, the things that are working, the new initiatives that the schools are taking. So, who would like to start?
I could.
Okay, Ms. Fahy?
Okay, I'm going to start with Willow. Don Bosch unfortunately is, I won't have a report from North Campus, but I'm going to make arrangements to meet Don when he's feeling better. And so, in our conversation, Mark Garrison was there with Chris Strif and myself. Willow, lots and lots of positives. Focus is reading and creating a culture of literacy. Chris did a principal literacy institute and has been going into classrooms during the balanced literacy time and doing assessments. And the teachers have also been filling out checklists on what they think they're doing well, what they possibly need help with. Then they're comparing those, and that's driving their professional development that is held at staff meetings. So, the focus of the staff meetings is professional development, and they're held every other week. Also, every other week to give the staff time to meet in their PLCs from eight AM to about nine forty-five in the morning, they have their youth-led summits. And tomorrow, Chris is going to be presenting on her trip to Africa.
Oh, wow.
And I believe students are going to come in their traditional dress and join her and tell them where they're from. So, she's looking forward to that tomorrow. Along with that focus on literacy, the Reading Buddy Program is going very, very well at Willow. In fact, Jean Roerly, who was instrumental in starting it with Lee Anderson, was given an award by Redeemer Lutheran Church, and Willow was given a thousand dollar donation to use. And then also, they have four book clubs amongst their staff at the moment. They're each reading a different book. One on the trauma-sensitive classroom, one on turning poverty schools into high-performing schools, and one, the Book Whisperer, getting kids to really love learning. So, each book club reads that and then does a presentation to the staff on strategy. They have their community garden and are working with the Jeffers Foundation on terms of classroom activities instruction, and it's free through the Jeffers Foundation. And because of, you know, in terms of their challenges, transient population, so they're working on a new student orientation where students will be giving a tour, the students are making a welcome-to-Willow video that will be shown to the new students coming in. And they're working on a similar brochure, but a kid-friendly brochure. And also for the parents, some orientation materials. And huge challenge for them is that this year, seventy-five percent of their kindergarten kids are free and reduced lunch.
Wow.
And also, working very hard on the challenge of parental involvement.
Very good.
I don't know how much time I spent, but...
Well, I've got the hook, I've got the hook, ready to go. So, no, that was good. All right, who would like to go next? George?
Well, I met with Tim at regarding Central Middle School, and that's the only school I am a liaison for right now. And Tim Maurer was there, I'm not sure why.
He was watching you, George.
He didn't have anywhere else to go. And then it totally mixed me up because I had Tim and Tim and Maurer. Tim went off to choir concert, I believe. You're going to tell him that I was great.
Fantastic.
Wonderful things going on. I know that in some cases, Sunrise will kind of be mirroring some of the things Central is doing, which makes sense. I know both schools are involved in the Promise Fellow Program. I really didn't know much about the Promise Fellow Program. So, the Promise Fellows are, they happen to be young, I don't know if they always happen to be young, people who are trained through AmeriCorps and come in and they, there's three Promise Fellows at Central. They are working with ninety students who have been identified by teachers in a previous year as having challenges academically, behavior-wise, and/or attendance. And then they meet individually, you know, with them over time, but then they also just work with them as a group of students who they are becoming an advocate for, basically. And they are a very positive advocate. Tim mentioned that no matter what happens, no matter how horrible, no matter what a nightmare this kid is, and every teacher is going to yell at them and, you know, principal, but they're always the good guys because they're going to keep this, maintain this advocacy, and the student gets to know that they always have this person who's going to be positive in their life at school. And it sounds like good things are happening with that. I'll mention quickly also that the decision has been made at Central to move Avid, which has been for seventh and eighth graders, to the sixth grade next year. I think we knew that, it had come to us. To talk about the process of having that happen, the successful, the success that they achieved in putting the information out there, communicating with families, and then, much to their delight and surprise to some degree, just recently was the night with parents to come, and of a hundred and thirty students recommended from the fifth-grade elementaries that feed Central, sixty-five or half of them showed up, which is like a record number. And were interested in it, so have a very active, probably two sections. That's really a neat thing. And then finally, the other big thing was, and this is positive, you know, response intervention kind of program has been in place and doing some good things, but there's going to be a, probably a change in the philosophy and structure happening. To move kids who are involved in the kind of remedial response intervention classes that they're not sitting up to see auto, partly because they are sort of with others like them, and they're not getting the intensity and duration of instruction that they should be, and they're all, and they might just keep moving up and always falling behind. So, they're likely going to be moving them to regular classrooms for these content areas, and then having one separate class where there's intense focus on a particular area that needs improvement, rather than have classes, like multiple classes on a daily. I don't think I explained that well, but it sounds like I could, they're using data to formulate this plan.
Thank you, George. Who wants to go next? Don?
So, I have three schools, and I met with the ALC this morning, but to kind of start with Matoska, you know, one of the great things, one of the things that I'm very encouraged about is that, especially even over time, as I've been in several elementary schools and several schools, the PTO at Matoska is very active. They're very strong, they believe in the school, they love the school. But I've noticed that throughout when I was at every other elementary school that I've been to, so, in every school. But the PTO is very active, and they're very passionate about the school. And one of the things that they're very passionate about is they believe the IB system is working very well at Matoska, it's doing, it's doing its job. One of the challenges that they see moving forward is that they know that it's, the school's filling up, and that they're going to, they're thinking that we probably need to look at where, maybe finding someplace in the north to maybe help offset some of that congestion. It's still going very well, things are very good there. They're just talking about maybe expanding some choices. With class sizes, it seems to be an opportunity. With second grade being as big as it is, they're, you know, the third and fifth grades are the smaller ones of the grade, so there's some opportunity for us to look at some class sizes and seeing how we're looking at into the future. With South Campus and with the ALC, most of our conversation was geared about something that I'm extremely passionate about, which is career pathways, and looking at where we're at, what the future looks like, how do we help young men and women look into that career pathway shape? We've got, our construction program seems to be doing well at the ALC and looking to hopefully expand some stuff at the, at South Campus, but we're actually, and then the manufacturing seems to be doing very well at South Campus, hoping to expand that into a summer program this year, and then hopefully to incorporate some stuff around the healthcare piece. I think there's just some great opportunities. We've got some great community partners that really want to come to the table and help us build some strong pathway programs, and I'm encouraged by everything. Avid, she seems to be doing very well at South Campus. Hopefully, I believe next year, they're looking at expanding it, so that's a great opportunity for our students at that high school level.
Great. Thanks, Don. Who'd like to go next?
We generally view Hugo and Onika Elementary as a singular entity, although we all know they are not. But that said, most of the things I'm going to say that came up are applicable to both schools with very minor points of differentiation. Literacy is the order of the day at both. They are really trying hard to close the reading gaps between the special ed population and the mainstream populations, and they've been using a two-pronged attack to do that with regular classroom teachers through the PLC program. And the great comment that they made there is just how passionate the faculty is about engaging in the PLC style of teacher improvement, particularly effective because it's free in the sense that none of it is tied to their observations or evaluations. So, that really allows for very frank exchanges between the literacy coach, which the faculties of both buildings absolutely love, frank exchange between the literacy coaches and the faculty members. They're very excited about that, and they're very hopeful that they'll see better results in closing that gap between the two populations I mentioned. So, they are, you know, both programs, PLC and literacy coaches, they're very, very pleased with and excited about. That said, the first thing that Jason Haley from Hugo brought up is their kindergarten FAST test. Now, none of us knew what FAST, the FAST acronym actually stands for, but it's math testing for kindergarten. Wait a second, you're talking about testing kids that can't even count. How are you going to test them in math, you know? And he goes, yeah, some of them can't count. And, but then again, you have other students that are the product, so very well-run preschools, and they can, and they can do more than count. And they did their initial assessment in math development for their kindergarten class in October, and they're on the cusp of having the second round, and they are, the principals, well, the principal, since that's Hugo, Onika doesn't have kindergarten, are, he's excited about it, but the teachers are as well. They're very, very hopeful about the outcome and seeing growth in math development in the kindergarten population, and they can't wait to see the results. Back, now this is an Onika-specific proposition, but they are implementing thinking maps, and Terri is very pleased with the initial indications of the results in getting kids to think higher-order thinking, and getting the ability to frame questions that would meet with higher-order thinking standards and constructs, things of that sort. And she's thinking the thinking maps that are the mechanism that they're using to try to develop this higher-order thinking in their students is really being done very successfully in the classrooms, and it's evident, self-evident from the way that the kids are asking questions that have been exposed to them for a while now. And then finally, we shouldn't forget, but they're both very pleased with the community partnerships that they've been able to forge and utilize.
Great. All right, Kim or Marge? Who wants to go next?
Okay, ladies first. I'm going to just mention one that's my third assignment, and we had a nice overlap because Kathleen Daniels was there and could add a little, little bit more about our early childhood, specifically some of the special programs. But Otter, which is one of my other schools, is also the whole school historically and has a really outstanding wing there that I hadn't even realized, even though I've been there a full year, I didn't realize they had a separate wing that apparently was part of nine sixteen at one point, and they have the space that they've filled with a wonderful program at this point. So, ECFE, this was something that they shared with me last week when we met, and outlined how, we all know, the enrollment is growing, and we don't even have a third of the possibles out there enrolled in the early childhood program. They've got a wonderful program going, you know, basically birth through till they're ready for kindergarten, and there's just tremendous things going in very crowded spaces with talented people. And this will be available for everybody on the, on the version of the agenda, the packet, that will be loaded up once the notes and everything are there. So, this will be included, even though you didn't get a handout and actually a little more information on enrollment, and as we look ahead to space and program and all the things they do, it's pretty amazing. And it tied in well, as we talked about Otter, which, this is the second year I've been going to Otter, and they are an amazing school, just like the ones I've already heard about. They've got some of the same programs with literacy coaches and lots of enthusiasm. I have never seen a PTO that's as much like a, I don't want to say a pumped-up sales meeting, but I mean, you have never wanted to go to Bingo, so bad as I did. You know, as they just talked about what was coming up, and they have, you know, the STEM program and their, last year I went to their carnival, and it was like, not quite like New Orleans, but it was pretty amazing. And it was, it's, it's an amazing school with parents, there were like thirty parents at one of the PTO meetings I went to. This time, I think it was down to about eighteen, but it's huge. And everybody's volunteering, there's lots of partnerships they're excited about, whether it's Tamarack or the literacy coaches that are coming in. Some of the statistics we just went over were, they did like a climate survey of the kids, and like ninety-nine percent of them feel safe and happy at school, and they feel like it's a really good place to be, which is what we want our kids to feel like. They really enjoy Tamarack activities, and they have a school that they buddy with. So, Willow and Otter do things together. They actually, I think Skype together, if I'm not mistaken, so they can talk with each other. They also Skype or chat with students in Haiti, so they're getting some global things. Just an amazing number of programs, and they're really working on their science with the STEM program that they're developing that's really exciting and has the kids inspired. So, oh, let's see, and they have their tie time, their pull-out time, some of the things that have been talked about already. Their U of M reading buddies are like an extra that they've got because they've got extra student teachers and a class that's actually taught there, and then the students who are college students go on to be extra reading personnel in their school and mentors for the kids and teachers that they have available. They've got some real exciting things going on there. And they, like everybody, are getting ready to do I Love to Read Month in February, and lots of good things going. And looking at the minutes, Sunrise, again, lots of positives. I've gone to PTO meetings, which aren't quite as insane as the elementary PTO meetings, they're much more restrained as the parents aren't all available all the time. But they, they have put on some really good things. I know last year, the biggest event I went to was their community dinner where the show was put on, and it was pretty amazing as the kids performed, and I also did the history day there. And, you know, they do some excellent things. They have a focus on being welcoming. They have, they also have a pull-out program for extra help, which must be an amazing thing to schedule, that's all I can say, because it sort of follows their mobile advisory, and it's a pull-out, sort of like band would be, but this, in this case, is for extra help in math and reading, and it's for kids that aren't in the intervention class but could use it. And the other things, wrap it up, I think I have thirty seconds, there's so many positives, but we talked about the wealth of choices that the kids have, and I've seen that at all of our school levels. Is that telling me to quit?
That's the dapper.
That's the dapper. But we just looked at all the things that they can choose from, from multiple languages and orchestra and band and STEM, and so many choices at the middle school as well as at the high school. We just need a longer student day. There's good stuff going in White Bear Lake, we should just, it's twenty minutes.
You can edit that out of the tape later. It really scared kids and parents.
Yeah, no, I just, I think school is an exciting place to be, and we've got lots of positives going on at every level.
Great, Marge, thanks. Kim?
Okay. I had Lake Ayers and Birch Lake, and Lake Ayers, there's like all of the other schools, there's a lot going on there. The Envoy Program, that's something that I wasn't aware of. It's a non-verbal communication program, or a program that very much hinges or gets into depth on that. As far as staff, teaching staff how to more verbally capitalize on non-verbal communication to, you know, whether it be drive a point home or a teaching type of situation, or de-escalating potentially, you know, volatile situations as far as behaviors and tempers and all of that kind of stuff. And I thought that was rather cool. I guess Willow is doing that to some extent, too, and so that was something I wasn't real aware of. As far as the art is concerned, the PTO has stepped up, and they have, they are paying for two additional art sessions or classes for the students there, cultural art is what they call it, where they're, in addition to the one that the district provides, there's these other two that the PTO provides on a cultural, you know, geared toward cultural, yeah, art, I mean, various ethnic-type situations and so forth. They've got an interesting thing here, too. I don't know if any of you looked at this pamphlet, I know it was in our packets beforehand, but this little, if you get a chance, this little picture on the front of the Birch Lake Elementary thing is called, what is it? It's the Hydropanics, is that what it is? Hydropanics Program? And they have partnered with, well, let's see, I guess it's the MIT, Massachusetts Technology, Target, IDEO, I didn't get into what IDEO stands for. But what these are, are little like terrariums that, what's that?
Hydroponics.
Okay, thank you. Hydroponics. Anyway, they get into the raising these plants, not only, I guess, land-born plants, but also water-born aquatic-type plants, and they're doing some research, following these plant development, you know, how they're coming along and working with these organizations with respect to the growth of those plants and the health of them and all of that kind of, kind of stuff. As far as literacy, they're meeting every Tuesday morning, what's called PLC time, and that is, is going well for them, so. Those are the things, I guess, I had as far as Lake Ayers, and then Birch Lake, well, both entities, and I think all of our elementary schools for the most part have these senior grandparents or whatever you call them, grandmas come in and read, and gentlemen, too, as well. One thing I didn't realize is Birch Lake is utilizing, much like Otter Lake is doing with the U of M students, teachers coming in, Birch Lake has a focus of bringing Centric College students in and working in the classroom and getting some of their teaching time as well. And then Birch Lake has every year, I guess, a half-day or so, and this last year was in November, Junior Achievement Time, where they, all of the kids are involved with bringing in, or having sessions with speakers. This year, it was from Alliance Life, and then Heraeus out here, and they came in and presented to the kids, answered their questions and so forth relative to business and what it is that they do. what it is that they do. As far as teacher literacy, there, uh, is the, uh, they're pulling out and by the way, both schools, uh, and I echo what has been said as far as the other schools are concerned, the literacy coaches are going over very, very well. Both schools are enjoying that and feeling like they're making a lot of headway in that regard. Um, one of the things that they're doing and maybe other schools are doing is pulling these students out that are having issues and, uh, working with them on a one-to-one, but it isn't the homeroom teacher that is necessarily working with them. It is a literacy coach or, or, uh, another teacher that is taking the time to, uh, sit down and, and get a, a little more of a feel, a perspective as to what the kids are dealing with, uh, what kind of issues they are having, obstacles and so forth as far as, uh, moving them along on the literacy scale. And then, uh, every month they have what's called, uh, PD, Professional Development Morning, um, and that is where I guess a member of the staff who has done, uh, some type of training or been involved in some, something of interest or perceived to be of interest to the other staff, they, uh, basically call, uh, the folks together and they have a session where this individual, uh, then more or less, uh, uh, imparts what they learned in kind of a train the trainer type situation the way it sounds, so. Uh, good things happening like everywhere.
Great. Well, I'll end. I met with Sarah Sevier from Vadis Heights and Dan Schmidt. Okay. We spent a lot of our time talking about the really wonderful partnerships that these schools have developed with, um, the parents, the, a lot of religious organizations, Alliance Club, et cetera. Sarah, uh, started by telling me and it's on the cover of the brochure about a Veterans' Day event, which they have begun at their school. Um, they invite veterans to come on Veterans' Day and this year they invited, uh, eight veterans from the Mung Secret Army who worked with the CIA during the war. They participated in this event and they, it taught the kids a lot about, um, citizenship, about what it means to be a citizen, what it means to honor your country. So that sounds like a fabulous event. Um, Sarah told us about the Kids Hope Partnership that they have with, uh, St. John's Church. It's a mentorship program, uh, involving our area senior citizens. Another partnership with Christ the Servant Church, um, they host events for the school. They, um, they sponsor a kindness retreat, which I think sounds just fabulous. Uh, she said the White Bear Lions have been invaluable. They, they partner with, uh, the school in a whole bunch of different ways. Uh, Dan told me about the Hug the Heart Partnership, um, and which provides a lot of service opportunities for the kids. They make those blankets, those tie-dye blankets, they make kits to be delivered, care packages to be delivered with meals on wheels, just a lot of different opportunities. Dan also told me that, you know, they started at Lincoln with a theater program through Ashland Productions and I know Matoska has used Ashland in the past as well, but now they've gone beyond that and Lincoln, parents and staff are now putting on theater productions on their own and they brought the cost for particip- participation down. It's no longer, doesn't have that cost barrier for it to participate anymore and they're just getting fabulous results. And as you remember, it was a Lincoln student who sang, uh, Somewhere Over the Rainbow at our recent convocation, so just fabulous work there. Both Sarah and Dan, uh, told me about the enthusiasm for the staff working in PLCs. Um, uh, they both said that they are, uh, working to develop action plans through these PLCs and Dan said the emphasis now is how to implement those action plans with fidelity in the schools. Um, and finally, both Sarah and Dan said the, the impact of the literacy coaches and the digital learning specialists in both schools has been very, very positive. They've been very pleased with that. I'm now going to turn very briefly to, we've got the opportunities for improvement or challenges and I would suspect if we go around, this will be very quick because the news from all of our school has been wildly positive. Kathleen?
Chair, um, I just wondered if Scott, I know you've got a chance to talk to Sarah Derby if you want to.
I was going to do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to do that before we address challenges?
Yes, I do, actually.
Okay, please, go ahead.
And it is very succinct because Sarah, her faculty and the parents of the, uh, students with which, uh, are enrolled in the Transition and Transition Plus Centers, they're just all elated about the success of placing these developmentally impaired students into positions, jobs, um, in society that allow them to become independent or at least at the very minimum, semi-independent, uh, productive members of society, uh, which is the absolute goal of the entire program.
Great.
And, uh, specifically there's a new venture and we as a board are all invited to Project Search at Gillette, uh, Hospital on the twenty-eighth.
At six o'clock, six to eight, I think it is.
And I think we all got that invitation in Google Calendar today.
And this one is going to target, um, first students, but in the medical, uh, support professions.
Great.
I mean, I asked her like even carrying lab samples, Rosh, is absolutely, yeah, they're very excited about that.
Great. Well, I'll talk very briefly and we can go around, if anybody has a challenge or challenges that they want to address quickly, we can do that. Um, what I heard from both Dan and, Dan primarily, Sarah to some extent, was we need more differentiated instruction with our kids. Kids come to us from all different places, at all different levels, with all different needs. We need to be able to meet them from an educational standpoint, from a social services standpoint, from all other standpoints, where they are and be able to meet those needs. Um, Sarah also emphasized and Dan agreed, the, the mental health needs in our students are growing every day. They come with dual diagnoses, they might be on the spectrum and having a mental health diagnosis and these kids are more challenging. It's, it's, we need more resources to, uh, address the needs of those kids. Sarah has a Federal Setting Three Program at her school, a neuro-bio program. Uh, Dan has an EBD program at his school and, and both of those programs, uh, present a lot of additional challenges, which we need, we need to meet the needs of those kids. Other challenges that you heard? Scott?
For all the success of, um, the literacy, literacy coaches, the principal of Oneika in particular would ask us as a board to consider reallocating those resources based on populations, uh, where you have say Birch Lake with, uh, total enrollment of two seventy-five, they've got like six fifty. And she understands completely that it adds our initial swipe at this, that, you know, everyone got a point five FTE. Um, they are, to put it very charitably, at capacity with the litus, liter, well, I'm having a hard time with that one.
DLCs.
Well, the literacy coaches in Oneika, you know, they're tapped out.
Good point. Any other challenges noted by any of the board members? Marge?
The most pressing I can think of is the space with our younger, younger students and our preschoolers coming up and, and what are we going to do? Not just because we have all-day kindergarten that takes up a whole room now instead of two sessions, but the preschool that's coming up, uh, the demand that is going to get bigger and then the changing demographics of space.
Right.
And all the special programs with all their needs.
Absolutely. Other challenges anybody would like to share or mention? George?
Yeah, I don't, I guess the challenge, but, um, I just was curious in talking about Central Middle School and, um, you know, I mentioned that Minnesota is now somewhat notorious, would be in forty-ninth or something in the number of school counselors per student. You hear a lot about this type of rhetoric in the news and, um, you know, the middle schools are trying to have counselors meet with all students and determine, uh, where they can intervene best and so I said, well, then it sounds to me like if, if you were handed enough funds to hire three staff, maybe you'd say we want three more counselors and that, and Tim's answer was no. Um, one of those probably likely would be a counselor, but, um, he mentioned reading specialist and literacy coach. And specifically reading specialist with, you know, just very, very strong and specific reading, um, skills to put into the intervention programs as, um, as, as a instructor, not as a coach even. Because one of the challenges is you have these attempts to intervene and respond to needs and, uh, for example, science, some kids really do report in science, but the point he made was they probably like science, they're not really bad at science, but they're bad at reading, um, non-fiction and the kind of stuff that you have to do in science to get there. So, um, that was interesting, more specialists in that way to attack the, the true underlying problem with these students that are challenged.
Great. Thank you, George. Marge?
And I've had, have one more area that I'd be remiss in not mentioning. As we talk about reading, our elementary schools have three media people that cover eight schools and that's unusually slim and we used to be one per school.
Okay. Anyone else want to share any other challenges? All right. I want to give a huge thank you to all of our principals and building administrators who are here tonight. This was, uh, this is one of my, um, favorite work-study sessions of the year. We get to hear from you, what's going on in the schools, all the terrific things you're doing and it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to get into the schools by proxy and, and, uh, hear more of what's going on. So thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to be here tonight. Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
All right. We'll turn to item B C and that's an update on elementary literacy.
Madam Chair, members of the school board, last spring you heard the enthusiastic endorsement of the concept of elementary literacy coaches from our principals, from our district administrators and from classroom leaders. Tonight you'll meet some of the stars in the role and you'll hear about what they are doing to make a difference. You already clearly have heard in your conversations with the principals that they're making a big difference. Now you will be in some respects tested to understand. Sarah Paul, who's with us this evening?
Welcome, Sarah.
Madam Chair. It is my privilege to be sitting here with, um, some great people that are doing some great work. I do have to, um, follow up on what you said, Sharon Newberg, about our principals. These are great leaders that are sweating the details and I was just really trying to listen intently to see if really the picture of the work that they're doing can come across to you in such a small amount of time, but thank you for the way that you listened and shared back because these people really are doing a lot of thinking, not only, you know, with the teachers in their buildings, with parents, but with their colleagues and they're always looking for opportunities to improve and they, they're great people and I'm just, it's a privilege to work with them. Yes. So we've got two principals that are going to join us in, in this, um, to be part of the presentation, um, Dan Schmidt and Terry Dolam, um, representing the broader group back here. Everybody's, um, here in attendance because this has been a key part of our learning that we've been doing together and has been a key priority that you've heard about from each building. Um, you also have up here, um, Anne Mulitz, who's representing the teaching and learning team that are really the unsung heroes that are really behind a lot of key questions that are being asked and supports that are provided into the, into the schools and so she's representing the team. And then this is Lori Schuweiler and she's representing the, the fantastic group of, um, literacy coaches and I'm going to have you guys just stand up because I, it's just really important that you get to see these people. Because although our focus is on the learning tonight, a lot of the learning that we're focused on and wanting to really help dive into is, um, moving forward in a much, um, in a, at a much better pace because of the work of these people and how they're supporting both our teachers and our principals in the work. So, um, part of the design, um, for this, you can click to the next slide, is, um, really wanting to take you into an experience as a learner because a lot of what we're focused on is learning and so Lori is going to give you an experience in learning. And then we want to make sure to touch on what we talked about last year in terms of rigor and the common core to make sure that we're all continuing to be grounded in the rigor of what it takes and why literacy is such a, such a key factor. And then we spend a lot of time talking about world's best workforce benchmarks and so we want to put literacy in the context of all of the benchmarks that go with the world's best workforce statute. Hand it off to Lori.
Thank you. Um, so to get us started, I'd like to ground you in the definition of reading as you see on the slide and it's, I define reading as a message-getting, problem-solving activity which increases in power and flexibility the more it's practiced. And so a reader needs to be doing that problem-solving all the time so they can get that message that is in all the texts that they're reading. And so before we, um, get going further in our presentation, I'd like to ex, you, to experience this problem-solving, um, as kind of a foundation for this presentation as we move forward. Um, that's some, okay, just so you can see it, sure. So we're going to have you read through this text and as you're reading through it, um, I want you to be figuring out, there's six blanks and I want you to figure out what word do you think fits into each of those blanks? And as you're doing that, also kind of notice what is the thinking work that you're doing to try and figure out those words? For example, you might be rereading or reading forward and trying different things. So be, so go ahead and try and figure out the words and think about what you're doing. So, I'm not sure if you quite got through it, that's okay. I think you had a feel for what's happening. Why don't you turn and talk to the person next to you and tell them some of the words that you put into the blanks and just kind of notice what each, what each of you put into the blanks, but also, um, tell them one or two things that you caught yourself doing as a reader.
This is what, this is what our readers are experiencing. They're not sure. They're trying to make meaning and they can't figure out like what.
I know, right? I, I bet you. English words. And I know they're going to be the same.
I actually, that statement right there, words not coming together. I appreciate you, um, just, it's not.
Just tell them to be complex.
That it's so, that it's not, they're down with the reading.
If I could do like experience, I agree.
I think she picked this specifically because so many different words come over here, which is like, you know, and I think they have to experience.
So I'd like to call you back together. You had to rely, um, a great deal on the meaning, the context of the text and just for your, um, just to see, um, I'll tell you the words that were specifically in this full in, um, text. The first one was improvement. Next it was hypothetical, compelling, knowledge, strong, and learn. Each.
So the technology that goes to unchain knowledge?
Yep. It is hot. But that, and that's why, um, each of you made sense of it by putting your words in. You had the meaning, but each of you probably gained a, a little bit different meaning. Without the print there, you didn't have, um, a beginning letter, you didn't have prefixes, you didn't have the length of the word to help you kind of narrow it down into what it should be. And so until we have, um, readers need the print, they need the structure of the text, the grammar and the meaning, all working together in order to really be reading. And so that's the, the difficulties that each of our readers, I heard him talk about the EL students in our classrooms, but any of the kids in our classrooms and the difficulties that they go through. Kids need to be thinking of it making sense, looking right and sounding right as they were.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And we're not going to grade it, so don't worry about that.
Last year you had the opportunity to learn a little. the E L students in our classrooms, but any of the kids in our classrooms, and the difficulties that they go through. Kids need to be thinking of it making sense, looking right, and sounding right, as they were.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And we're not gonna grade it, so don't worry about that.
Last year, you had the opportunity to learn a little bit more about the Common Core state standards, and how they fit in with the literacy work that you've been doing, and I'm gonna turn it over to, um, Ms. Dahlum to tell us a little bit more.
Call me Teri.
Well, they coached me.
Um, you know, I, I remember sitting here back in April, so a little bit more than six, I don't know if I calculated out, months ago, when we were talking about how important it was gonna be for us, um, to have literacy coaches on board, and the driving force for me in that thinking really was how, when the state adopted the Common Core standards for reading, and how much that raised the rigor for us. Um, and I think a lot of our teachers think in terms of teaching reading, did think of, in terms of teaching reading in, in the sense of, you know, diagrams and blends and all those kind of beginning things, and not really understand the complexity of reading, and things like, really, how do you look for text evidence, and, and what does it mean? Not just to just be able to underline, well, here's where I found it. Um, but the rigor that goes with the Common Standards was to, to the degree that we needed expertise in all of our buildings. Um, and there was a lot of expertise within our, within our, the level of our teachers, but, um, they're teaching, so they can't help each other. And so being able to tap into, I mean, many of our literacy coaches came from the quality of our teachers. Um, but to be able to offer up that time, that collaborative nature, um, of being able to say, let's dive into these standards, and let's really understand what these standards mean, I think that was the first real wonderful step for our staff to be able to bite off this big apple in a different way.
So, why is reading at grade level in third grade important? And we took, we've taken a look at a lot of research by literacy leaders like Ellington, Fontes, Penau, Cockens, as well as the National Research Council and the Annie E. Casey Foundation to share that, um, to like, really look at that importance. Um, so grade three is important because of the amount of reading that students have to, the volume that they undergo, and the complexity of the text as they move up. Um, they need to, um, read with much more stamina, with much more volume, and that rigor of the text complexity just keeps increasing as they continue. Um, as well as they need to be writing and talking about books at a much greater and deeper, with more, deeper understanding, and to engage in those, and comprehend those texts. So, one of the best ways to share this story, um, is to really, um, talk to our teachers and our students, and, and so the past few weeks, we have created a, a video to really share, um, the work that's happening.
What is Santa Maria's play? Holy Mary, number two, eight, it's a big song. We can't all have car-cord underwear, we're turning TV. I wanted to watch a great show. I heard a sound coming from the seventh door. Tap, 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 tap.
Something that I'm trying to do a lot in my classroom here is really just creating a, a habit of reading, and, you know, that lifelong goal, uh, lifelong readers and learners, and, um, really making it something where they enjoy it and they want to do it.
I just like reading books that are really funny. Funny as money's.
When kids find success in reading, it, it's huge.
Being able to critically think about a text and form your own opinion, and really thinking beyond just, that's, that's just what, just, you know, connected to the real world around us.
You are a better reader when you have the background knowledge to go with it, and then you can make the connections, and you can do obvious furthering or finding the main idea.
We're looking at author's purpose and morals and themes within texts, and the, the complexity of those texts, and, you know, it's, it's up there, it's high.
So, why do you like these books?
Um, I like them because I feel like they're just like old fashioned.
It's a why question? Why, why are we, why are you reading this way? Why is the character doing this? Why do you read this part really loud or really express it?
I can see it's kind of like a mystery, what's gonna happen in the book?
That's something that we ask those graders, is not just to read it, but understand it, analyze it, and then talk about it with their peers.
My son doesn't like reading, because I used to not like reading, and my mom got the odd cat in the kitchen, but now I'm starting to try and figure out, like, other books and libraries that I can read.
I converse a lot with, with the kids as metacognitive of thinking, we, we have some call it that, but I use more, you know, thinking about your thinking.
If we can get them to create a habit out of it, and, and find the love for reading, that will continue, you know, that way.
And when they say, I never used to be able to read this kind of a book hard. I didn't understand what I was reading before, and now I know, that's, that's fun, that's what could be better.
So, a huge thank you to Danielle and Karen and their third-grade students for helping us with this video. It really puts the whole thing together for us. Um, the two kinda takeaways, that really growing that love of reading, and then the complexity of the reading, and how it grows, um, connects with the world's best workforce, um, way beyond third grade.
Yes, well, how does grade three reading connect to the, uh, benchmarks in the world's
best workforce? So, we've been very intentional over the past two years to design an instructional framework that really embraces those benchmarks. And if you just kinda remember what those benchmarks entail, they start us on a journey in which we're getting kids ready for kindergarten, and then we're moving them to be at grade level in reading by third grade. And then you move into, and along the journey, you're always taking into account the achievement gap and the opportunity gaps with all the different student groups. And then as they get towards the tail, and obviously, we're really striving for, uh, all kids to graduate from high school, and then also to be career and college-ready. And so as we looked at that entire journey, we realized that one of the key pieces to that is literacy. And we're really fortunate to have literacy coaches among our midst to take us on this journey and to help us achieve those benchmarks that are in front of us. So, we'll kinda slide it back over to Lori, and she'll explain a little bit more about that.
Uh, as Dan was talking about, that, um, growth across, and this is a continuum that kinda shows, um, we're always simultaneously learning to read and reading to learn. Starting in kindergarten, it's not just about learning to read, but we're, it's gathering meaning in kindergarten and all the way through the grades. And even as, um, adults in the, you know, in the professional world, we pick up different complex texts, and we're having to learn how to dig into those, and, and learn to read, and read to learn. Um, so, from our preschool initiatives, all the way through, um, our opportunity-achievement gap, um, we're just help, trying to help our students be fluent and flexible readers all across. So, we'd like to open it up, um, to any questions that you might have.
You guys did a fabulous job. George, I seen the finger finally going up.
Yeah. I mean, how are we doing? But, I mean, we're not bringing out a bunch of data here today, but everybody's listing out an achievement gap, not closing it, and, and not really related with general terms. So, are we, are we feeling like now this is going to make the difference? And just go why? But we're trying to make this before, that we're trying and doing things that, that the education has found, but, right, that we just keep tearing the achievement gap, isn't, we're not making the, the kind of step that we need to in it. Um, you know, I've been reading, I've read articles about, you know, the magic third grade thing, and, you know, some states retain people, right? They pause, and they stay in third grade if they're not at third grade grade level. We don't do that, because we need the negative factors to the child to draw, but after third grade, they say you're, you're not learning to read anymore, right? You're, you're using your reading skills to learn in other subjects. So, if they're not there, how can they do that? So, you see how I just thought of a question, but... What do we, what's kids' confidence about moving forward this year, next year, with whatever?
I'm gonna start, and I'm gonna hand it off to a couple people, but, um, it's not just one decision that's ever gonna close the achievement gap, it's multiple decisions together that are intentionally aligned in order to, to cause, create the right conditions for learning to occur. And one of those decisions had to do with our welcome-back conference. Um, we really value instructional time being best used for instruction, and the premise behind our welcome-back conference was relationships and getting to know a student as a reader, so that you could adjust instruction, like Dan said, to really differentiate to meet student needs. And that was a key part, and our reading assessment was a key part of our welcome-back conference. And so it began there, when, um, I know on some of the, you know, acronyms used, I think you saw in a couple of brochures, um, oral reading record, O R R. There's many feedback loops throughout the year that are looking at a child's reading level, and trying to track to see, are they on track to be at grade-level proficiency throughout the years? So that when we get our M C A data, it isn't like the one-time sweating it out, did we make it or did we not make it? There's continual adjustments, but that's why the literacy coach is so key, because they're helping actually take that information and, and influence instructional practice so that individual students get their needs met. And last year, I know that one of our principals said, teaching reading is like teaching rocket science. And the reason why that is, is true is because there's so many different facets to reading that in order to intentionally focus on what the need is for that child, in order to really accelerate in their reading, we've got to make sure that we have that time to collaborate. We are a learning organization. You will, you will see in our presentation, we actually weren't perfect, and some of you may have caught an error, you know, that may have occurred, but we, we work together and we work through things that sometimes you're the one that's bringing the solution forward, and sometimes it's your colleague, but that's why, when we talk about our literacy coaches, we always are talking about our time to collaborate, and how key that is in order to get to the instructional change that's needed for students. I'm gonna hand that off to either principal, because I think that, um, you can't really talk about one without the other if you're really gonna do the deep work to give an answer to an achievement gap or opportunity gap, um, shift, and cultural shift.
One of the things that I know Teri and I talked about, and also our other colleagues, is this year is really building that trust with the, the teacher colleagues, and there's a different conversation, as we had discussed back in the spring, when an administrator approaches a teacher about best practice in literacy compared to a colleague. And that trust takes place, and then they start to think at a deep, at a deeper level, and then they're willing to take risks, because it's all about taking risks and changing that practice. And then you can demonstrate that in front of a, if a colleague, like a literacy coach, and then they can just view the success or the challenge of that change, and if they need to re, refine it in some way. And then they're also more engaged within that environment, and they can see how the kids are, um, acknowledging the instruction that's going on, and, and how do they adjust along with the teacher within their instruction. And that partnered with our P L C initiative to help really dig deeper within our data, and to determine, okay, are we moving forward in the right way? And having our literacy coaches there to help them better understand the data has been really helpful, I, I feel. Anything else you wanna, wanna add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I could echo everything that Dan said. We are doing some things, um, that are, are woven together that help us, and that is, we have a lot of, we're, we're data-rich, we have a lot of data, but really understanding what that data means, um, is one piece of that, and how do we utilize that data to provide better instruction? We're, the whole P L C movement is getting, we're getting better at that. And that's, it is a process, it's not gonna be something you can just flip the light switch on and it's gonna all of a sudden show results. I think it's building trust among colleagues, um, so that those conversations take place at a deeper meaning, at a deeper level. And then the other piece with that, I think, is really getting people to understand, I, I'm gonna differ just with one thing that's been said here tonight, I, I believe that having kids ready to read at third grade is critical to them learning, but I'm, I, I'm gonna not say that we stop teaching how to read at third grade. Um, you know, we, we should always constantly be teaching kids how to read for deeper meaning and understanding, and making connections, and all those hierarchy thinking skills, that, um, yes, you can read a sentence, but if you really understand that sentence, and you understand the meaning behind it, and the author's intent, and all those kinds of deeper thinking, um, we're asking our teachers to do that at the younger grade level now, um, and I think we have a better understanding of what that means because of the literacy coaches and what that's brought. So, how does that, you know, close the achievement gap? My hope is, we know our kids much better than we did before, we know what skills they're missing, um, we monitor whether they're gaining those skills, um, and, and we're becoming much more systematic about this process, K-12.
I, I think the message that we were trying to show on the last slide was really that learning to read and reading to learn doesn't stop, it's just continuous, um, across all of the grades. We're constantly teaching new strategies to kids across, um, middle school and high school as well. Um, I would echo what, um, everyone was saying about our, um, collaborative team, teams working together and really looking at the data, and they're using that data to look for strengths, to help them know what the next step is, so they can really accelerate that learning with those kids. And together, we really, um, work, um, to help figure that out. Um, one of the, um, training opportunities as well, that as, um, coaches we've gotten is, um, equity with Jamie Almazan in what is responsive, um, culturally-responsive teaching look like. And so as well as our, our reading strategies, we're also looking at, at it culturally, and, and how can that support our teachers and our students as well.
I will say one additional thing around, um, the level of expertise. Our literacy I Q, as far as knowledge, has shifted upward, because we've shifted the conversation. So, when I talk to Lori, and I talk to the coaches, and I talk to teachers, their knowledge of what is effective literacy instruction is, they ask the right questions, and they dig deeper, and they, they bring the expertise that we, we had, but when you have them in every building, and they're talking about literacy, and they know the research, and they know the places to get the information, and that thoughtfulness and reflection, um, it has boosted that understanding, and people have, when you heard in the buildings that they wanted more, they want those deeper levels of conversation. And that, that has been an immediate shift.
I have a question for you. You know, I know George, and Ellen, and Scott, and Marge either are or have been educators, I'm not. So, I have just a practical question for you. Can you give me one or two examples of what you've set or done working with a teacher to kinda change what they're doing? What advice you've given them, and that it's made a positive just difference in helping kids learn to read?
Um, I, I think the biggest change comes in the convers, the questioning conversations, and then reflection, but some of the work that we've done that leads up to that is, um, they'll, the teachers, our colleagues are asking us questions, and we might model, um, some instructional strategies for them with, with their kids. Um, well, we might plan with them, and, um, that whole time, asking some, you know, questions about your purpose for doing this, why, why, so narrowing down, um, you know, and having, having us really have the time to reflect. So often, as teachers, there's so much coming at us, but hopefully, we give them, as teachers, the chance to have some time to really think about their purpose, think about their kids, and the next steps that they're working on. And then we observe the teachers as well, um, and, and they sometimes have us, will you focus on what I'm saying? And then they reflect and look at that. Will you focus on what the kids are doing, how engaged they are? And then we can share that data with them and have that reflective conversation as well.
Question down here, was it you, Dan?
Yeah, I just had more of a comment. I just really, you know, taking my school board hat off and putting my parent hat on, I wanna thank you all for your work. It's really important. You're changing the, you know, you're helping kids change the way that they learn into the future, and thank you all very much.
Anyone else? George?
Um, so, um, yes, I agree. I, I still, I agree. I still, reading as a teenager, it's not, it's my whole family, they're sixty, so, didn't mean to say that it's not learning at grade three, but arguably, that in some articles, it changes that, right? And so, if you don't have that third grade level, you're not only behind in reading, but you're behind in other things, because those things are the gas, because reading is the key to doing, that's my, my philosophy. And, um, so, I guess, you know, we know that, you know, the best practice for reading is, I forget about this, you know, that, you know, there's some say you're never gonna close, you're never gonna stop, you're never gonna not have a achievement gap, because there's so many other factors going on. So, then, we're trying to, to at least arrow it, and we believe that we should, you know, be...
But, like, the more we teach reading strategies, and the better readers, our top groups are, it's like you'll never catch up, right? So, I mean, what's our goal? What's our goal? Is it too close the achievement gap with these, all of these groups, or?
some that say you're never going to close, you're never going to stop, you're never going to have an opportunity gap because there's so many other factors going on. So then we're trying to, to at least arrow it, but we believe that we should, you know, be. But the more we teach reading strategies, the better readers, our top groups are, it's like you'll never catch up. So I mean, what's our goal? What's our goal? Is it too close the achievement gap with these, all of these groups or, because we want to measure this, right? How are we going to know that with these new strategies, these, you know, superstars who are too super that we're successful? How are we, you know, two of them, how are we going to know they're successful? Are they better than state average or something?
Well, I, I think I can confidently say this amongst the group. I don't think our goal is to slow some learners learning down in order to make sure others grow so that we have no gap. I mean, you hear the language about the, the closing the opportunity gap as really our operating lens of making sure that every student has the conditions to learn as much as they can and just accelerate everyone's learners, which is why we talk a lot about cohort analysis. How did a student do in their learning last year compared to this year? So M C As don't just have to be about comparing amongst each other in terms of who was proficient and who wasn't. You can still look at how much growth occurred over the past year based upon what we know is grade level proficiency. I think our goal is for everyone, every student in this system to learn as much as they can every year. I, I just think it still comes back to what our principals focus on is differentiated instruction and how am I, how are we as a system creating the conditions for a teacher to change their instruction, take risks and say, how can I do something just a little different or better in order to meet the students' needs because this is what I'm seeing their learning focus needs to be and it's different for the student here? And that's really what we're designed around, which is why we always go back to collaborative inquiry, collaboration and making sure we have the time not only to look at the data but actually adjust what we're doing. And that takes a commitment of time in order to do that.
Ninety-nine and a half, it won't do. We're trying to get every kid up to 100% of their potential. Anybody else have any questions, comments, discussions? Yeah, Marge?
Briefly. Just from my time at North, I saw the good that happened when our reading teacher, who was a certified reading teacher, was able to share her expertise just with an extra hour or so a day to work with someone. And I still am on the North Campus mailing list and things come out, tips that everybody can use. So the time to share and teach each other helps you differentiate for your kids because the same thing doesn't work with everybody. So we need time.
Anything else?
I guess one thing, we're talking a lot about learning, but it's about you. Is there anything that you're like, oh, why aren't they saying this? You know, or is there anything that you really feel needs to be said as we talk about literacy and we talk about the embedded P D that is being provided?
Coaching.
Is there anything coming to mind or do you?
Well, I can just quickly, I think, and it's just been a partnership with Terry and Jason, but I've been really working with our new, new teaching staff, which those of us in education, although it's first years are very challenging and even with a mentor, you feel, you know, it's scary, it's overwhelming and especially with all the test scores. So Terry definitely encourages new teachers to work with me and especially after observations. And it's gotten, my workload has really increased now after the test scores came out, but not, not out of fear. I think it's just we're really, I'm building capacity with teachers so it's not where I walk in and I show them a cool new trick and I leave and then come back a month later. It's really building capacity. So one, one of the new teachers really was struggling actually more with behavior. And we know that you can't be a good teacher if you have no, if your classroom management isn't there. So I actually worked with her for a couple of weeks on classroom management and now that classroom is, it's like a whole different classroom, not just because of me, but because of our collaboration. So we built capacity there. And then I would go in and model and then I would observe. So we kind of have a back and forth going. Tuesday's I model, what Thursday she teaches and so forth. And so now we go through, we kind of have like a whole literacy component of look force. We're pretty much through the whole sheet because every week we choose one more that we're working on and it's like a whole different classroom. And we've been working together for maybe two to three months, but I mean, I know it's hard to, to score that, but it is truly a different experience and the kids are learning and engaged and she's really happy. I'm really happy. So that's just one, one little piece of excitement.
Just a little bit, just part of what you reminded me is that, you know, we were here presenting for the mental health part and I don't think we can just look at literacy or any of our academics in isolation. We don't have the other components, which we've heard a lot about tonight through your discussion with the teachers, that mental health, students have to have that foundation before they can get to those educational behaviors. So I think what everybody's doing is so great and I'm so excited about the literacy coaches and everything, but we do have to address that in conjunction with the literacy coaches, more help with the mental health part so that our kids can avail themselves to the wonderful instruction. So to answer your question about that gap, it's, it's got to be both and. It's got to be all these great things and then it's got to be the support for student wellness and family wellness and everybody being resourced before they can avail themselves. I just had to say that.
Maybe to end with the opportunity, in the spirit of being a learning organization, we have reading month coming up. I'm going to actually get some support from literacy coaches to do an interactive read aloud so that I'm actually stepping into the shoes of some of the strategies that they're bringing to our teachers. If anybody wants to join me and then take that in with you when you go and read in, I, I just think it's important for us to really understand what it's like for, for taking, learning a new strategy and bringing that to students. So feel free to join me.
And a lot of the buildings have book challenges, so they've challenged me. Now I'm going to do, I'm doing a book a week and that's, but they set a high bar, so.
Thank you all for being here. I think every one of us, talking to our, especially our elementary principals tonight, we've heard such great things about the work of all of you literacy coaches. So thank you so much. Continue the fight. You're doing great work. All right. All right, we'll turn to our next item, which is B D, Overview of Fiscal Year Seventeen Revised Budget and Overview of the Potential Operating Levy. Dr. Lovett and Dr. Kasparcheck.
Madam Chair, you introduced Dr. Kasparcheck and Mary Vasky is also coming forward. She's been an important part of the team, although she, she sometimes tries to sit in the background.
Wait just a minute, it quiets a little bit. I think Gray would appreciate that. All right, Dr. Kasparcheck, Ms. Vasky, always a pleasure to have you back here tonight.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. So this evening, we'll, we'll spend the first part of our discussion on our revised fiscal year 2017 budget. And along with that, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about our projected budget going forward. And then as time allows, we will also talk briefly about our potential local operating levy renewal. And we did talk about that at a previous meeting. I know at the outset of that, we were going to have a brief discussion about it at that meeting. It turned out to be a little bit longer discussion than what we had anticipated, so we'll just have to see how much more we'd like to cover tonight on that. But we'll, we'll think about that when we get there. So a few things. I'll start with high level and then I'll refer to the document that you have, the more specific information you have. But generally, our, the first, first few slides show that we're projecting a balanced budget. So for fiscal seventeen, we were projecting a balanced budget for this year during our, with our preliminary budget back in June, and that is still the case. The reason we do, the reason we do a revised budget mid-year, there are a few reasons. First of all, our actual figures are known for the previous fiscal year at this time. When we present a preliminary budget to you in June, we don't know what our actual figures are because our audit hasn't been completed yet. When we get our audit completed, we plug those numbers into our spreadsheets and then we make adjustments going forward. So that's one of the big reasons why we do a mid-year adjustment, is we finally know what our actual results were from the previous fiscal year. So we, with our actual results, fiscal seventeen is still looking to be a balanced budget. So our expense, let me back up. There weren't a lot of adjustments on our revenues and again, we'll get into the specifics when we go line by, we won't go line by line, but we'll have an opportunity to do that when we move in to that more detailed version. On our expenditures, again, things were adjusted accordingly. We have situations that arise, such as we added a section at one of our elementary schools late in the summer, so we, we add staffing. So an adjustment that comes to you mid-year would include any of those types of things that are, that come up after June when we approve our preliminary budget. We made an adjustment this year with our transportation for purchase of some additional vehicles. But overall, we're, we're expecting our revenue to exceed expenses by ninety-five thousand for the year. Okay, and then a little bit on the assumptions for the, for projected year fiscal two, two thousand eighteen, fiscal year two thousand nineteen and fiscal year two thousand twenty. We're making an assumption of two percent for fiscal eighteen. That's an, that's an actual figure we're using in our, in our, in our budget and then we're assuming a 1.75% increase going forward. Now, the legislative session, we'll have to see where this ends up. Last year, we ended up with two percent for the biennium. We don't know where, where we'll end up, but typically we are in that range. Or if we're not at that level on the, on the formula allowance, we usually see some categorical funds that are increased so that overall, we're able to, we're able to show that, that net increase of about that. So those are the assumptions we made. Special ed, we're assuming an increase of about three percent for those out years. That is likely going to be low. There were some changes that were made and we've talked a little bit about that. Jim Ickton, our auditor, has talked a little bit about those changes. So we think it'll be higher than that. There's a, there's a cap as to how much your revenue can go up from one year to the next in, in special ed. So we're actually bumping up against that cap. So in the next couple of years, we actually might pick up a little bit more revenue there. So that's a positive development. And then federal, we typically assume no increase and that's, that's typically what we do. We've been fortunate where it's, it's remained flat and even a slight increase in the last few years. Okay, and then with our expenses for fiscal years eighteen through fiscal year twenty, we assume competitive increases on salary and benefits. And depending on the expense category, we might assume no increase. So for supplies, we might not, we might not increase that from one year to the next if we're doing pretty well. For salaries and benefits, we might, again, depending on the, where we're at in the state economy, we might, we might assume one percent or two percent, slightly more than that. Again, depending on if there's an initiative that might require us to increase our, our salaries more than that. So that's typically what we do. We normally talk specifics about salaries when we go into our, our negotiations sessions where we will, we'll be more specific about what our targets are with salary and benefits. But.
How are we defining regional for us?
We have identified school districts in the Northeast Metro that we typically compare ourselves to in the bargaining process. That's, so our, our region. We also look at metrowide. Yeah.
Since I'm facing this way and I can't see five of you behind me, just feel free to call on each other and whatnot because I know I'm not going to see you. So, yeah, Marge?
Yeah, my only question was, and I paid more attention maybe in the past when I was working, but where do we usually fall in the, in our area? Are we in the middle? For salaries, because that's a big expense for all of us.
Where do we fall overall in terms of our?
Yeah, if you compared White Bear staff with our Northeast Regional as you defined it.
Like our settlements or our actual salary?
Well, if we looked at F T Es and, and, and the, and the wages, do we, are we competitive as we look at, you know, pulling more people in?
Yeah, we're very competitive. I think, again, I defer to Linda and include us down a lot of the research on this and this is again, part of something that we talk about during negotiations and these sessions.
I'm going to show you the East Metro comparison, but I can just share that we're usually on the upper hand when it comes to salary, but we've got some catch up to do when it comes to health insurance contribution.
We made some progress last, last round, but.
I'm just thinking as our class size looks like it's going up and our student pop looks like it's going up and retirements are coming, we need to make sure that we are thinking about that too.
Yeah, well, we're, we're definitely competitive, you know. And we can talk and get more specifics on that. All right.
So.
Is the levy, so what are the assumptions?
The assumption is that the levy is, so that revenue is not drop off.
Add a, just a little.
Add a little, yeah. And I think I can cover this. I think I'll, I'm going to go to the, to the document, I'll do my best to reference there.
So if you have your, if you have a paper copy, read it. If not, if you could go to your, the first page behind the memo, and I don't have the page number, I can, I can tell you here in a second.
It's seventy-three.
So I'm going to just highlight a few things on page seventy-two. What you have, just to explain what you have, you've got a summary page, that's that, that's that single page, page seventy-two. And then behind that, you've got a couple of more, a couple more pages of detail. I'm going to focus on page seventy-two. I'll, I'll focus more on a thirty thousand foot view for the, for the board. These are like the key things you should look at when you see this summary. The first one, I'll point, the first line I'll point you to is actually line fifty. Let me preface things. We're focusing on the general fund. We actually didn't, we're not presenting a revised budget for our food service or community service. We're, we're tracking pretty well on those, so we didn't, we didn't, we didn't see the need to come with a revision on those. So we're focusing on our general fund. So if you look at line fifty, the light gray preliminary twenty seventeen, that's the budget that the board approved back in June. So we were projecting revenues to exceed expenditures by forty-three thousand one hundred ninety-three. So we presented a balanced budget. That's what we, that's what we anticipated. We're right in line with that. We're just slightly more than that right now. So things are tracking well as we're about midway through the year. So now I'm going to shift into if we look at our projected budgets. This is an important time of year because it helps establish what we're looking at as we go into our staffing, planning, and as we work towards our June of seventeen preliminary budget that we present to you for fiscal year eighteen. Now our focus tonight and then the, the focus at the next board meeting is, is going to be fiscal seventeen and the action that you take on that. But now is the time when we also point out how things are looking in the next year and then a couple of out years. We are, we're projecting a balanced budget going forward and this is, this is good news as we head into an operating levy. We've got, our enrollment is trending upward, so typically at this time of year, you might see deficits in those out years and we'd always say, don't overreact to those, those deficits. If we were to assume stable enrollment or if we were in a period of declining, declining enrollment, you would, you would actually see those dip into the negatives. But we're at a point now where we've, we've been able to project going forward a little more optimistically on our revenue. And so we did that. We wanted this to be as true a picture as we could come up with without being either overly optimistic or overly pessimistic about what's going to happen in the state. So this is a pretty true picture about what, where we're at as of right now, how we think things are going to play out. The one, the projected in twenty twenty, that's actually probably a little lower than what we would anticipate. There's, we actually didn't include a little bit bigger bump there on. There's, we actually didn't include a little bit bigger bump there on revenue due to enrollment. Some of our enrollment projections are perhaps a little too optimistic, so we did pull back on that, that out-year. But still, we're showing a balanced budget going forward. So, back up now on, I'm on revised twenty-seventeen, that column. Line six, our other, that was a big adjustment from one point six million up to three point two million, and Mary, can you explain that? Is that the Fund Twelve and recognition, revenue recognition?
For many years, our auditors encouraged us to show revenues and expenditures, but for many years, we didn't. We would net our expenditures. So, last year was the first true year that we actually split them out, and that's why the big bump in the other. You'll also see the bump down below. We also have what's called Fund Twelve, which relates to the general fund. That is all your student activities and so forth, and that fund actually generates a million dollars in revenues and like a million expenditures. So, we had to put that in also. So, the preliminary, we had no idea what our revenues were going to be, because we had never seen a true audit with revenues. So, now that we can shore it up, now you see that it's closer to the actual for sixteen.
So, as an example, if we had a, we used to do a net, so if we had a million in revenue and a million in expense, it would be a net of zero, so it actually wouldn't show up either place. Now, it's showing up in both places. So, that, that's part of the, that difference in line six. So, just in accounting, just a change in our accounting practices recommended by our auditor. So, and then, we, we assume that we would do it the same way going forward, and that's why there isn't any major fluctuation with that going forward. So, again, those are the, I mean, the, it looks good. I mean, I, the, the bottom line is it looks good for our general fund. It looks good as we head into our staffing, planning. Did want to mention a couple of other things. I committed to bringing that up. We had, with our staffing, during our, with our revision, the mental health conversation from a couple of board meetings ago, there was some discussion about, can we build something into our revised budgets to perhaps do something in the current year? And that, that's included in this budget. It's also included in fiscal year eighteen to increase our staffing and our, with our, for mental health supports. So, I know Kathleen, we've, we've had a conversation about this, so that was one thing that you had asked about, and we did, we were able to work that in and still maintain a balanced budget.
What does T E stand for?
For this year, we chose a dollar amount that got us to, you have a position that's open.
We have a point four.
So, we added enough for a partial year to make that a full position.
So, it'll be a point six.
Yeah. And then, going forward, it's a full FTE, so we roughly use a hundred thousand salary benefits for, for an FTE.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, Dr. Kasmercheck. Line fifty, let's go, you know, all the way out to the right, projecting twenty-twenty.
Is that fifteen or five-zero?
Five-zero.
Five-zero, okay.
And then, compare that with line fifty-seven, which, we've had this discussion before, that I call the reserve fund. But, I, I see why the net change is increasing when you compare that to, is it line forty-eight, I guess, where the transfer to the community service fund is decreasing by year, and so we end up in, you know, est, you know, projecting for twenty-twenty, in round numbers, a hundred and forty thousand surplus, and yet, the reserve fund or the fund balance, the percentage is going down. I was just wondering why that would be when you're getting ever-increasing cash, you know, excesses.
So, it's a, it's a function of the, your cash, your reserve compared to your expenditures? So, as your expenditures grow from year to year, even if you maintain the same amount in reserve, your expenses grow every year? So, it's reflected as a percentage of your expenses, it'll be less.
So, you're saying we're not moving any more into the reserve?
No. So, but I'm glad you pointed out line fifty-seven. That's a, that's a key number that we refer to. Our, our fund balance policy is twelve point five percent to sixteen point seven. We try to maintain that in that range. We do that, and to the years on this as we look forward, so that's a positive. But the, the question you're asking is, it's a, it's our unassigned amount compared to our expenditures. So, if you go up above, it's...
Well, it just strikes me as anomalous when you have the largest, you know, excess in funding, you have the lowest reserve.
Because our expenditures... Yeah, go ahead, George.
If I understand this, for why, I don't, for me reading this, I almost, because of the policy, fund balance, I'd almost want my fifty-seven bold. But, that number is going to go, like, it goes down from fifteen point six to fifteen point four, to fifteen point one, to fifteen point one, to fourteen point nine, even though the fund balance increases. But, is it correct that that is because the expenditures projected in future fiscal years are going up? You know, so, it's a math problem, right? The expenditures, you know, are going up. The revenues aren't quite keeping pace, even though we continue to have in the bottom line a positive number, but the total percent of unassigned expenditures dips just slightly, but I think it's a factor more of just the increased expenditures in the future fiscal years. Does that seem right?
Right.
Did that answer your question, Scott?
No, not entirely, because if you're going to chalk it up to expenditures being higher, then why do you have the, the more robust bottom line, if you will? Then again, why the lower reserve? If you're spending more, you know, I understand that, but then it seems like, you know, the, it seems like line fifty would be lower, i- if expenses are, you know, increasing. I, I understand that the bulk of the fund balance on line fifty is coming from the decrease in transfers from, to the community fund, you know, that's very clear. And it just seems, spending more, that your bottom line would be lower than what we're showing. And especially, it still stands, if we have the highest ever, at least on our projection here, line fifty fund balance, that the reserve fund would go down.
I think, let me try again, the, the rate of increase of the net change in fund balance, you know, it's going up by, you know, some thousands, right? But the, the, the increase in the budget, the overall budget, we're talking millions. So, the, the, the rate of increase of the overall budget is faster and higher, more than the relative increase of the positive in the annual budget. You know, small number, huge number, so that makes the overall percentage go down a little bit, even though, you know, the number is increasing. But that increase of the fund balance is a small number compared to the two million increase of the overall budget.
Which is on line twenty-seven, that reflects the increase in expenditures.
It's very complex.
So, our any fund balance, line fifty-six is going up. If you just look at it as a dollar amount, it goes up year to year. It doesn't go up as much as our expenditure line, line twenty-seven. It's going up at a faster rate, and the expenditures are going up at a faster rate. So, displayed as a percentage, you'll see that go down. So, that's the relationship between the form of the form.
All right, I think we have that answered.
So, I'm gonna move on, unless there are more questions about the summary document. Again, big picture, we are in good shape financially. We can, we continue to maintain a balanced budget. We're projecting a balanced budget going forward. Staffing levels, we anticipate remaining similar to where we are now. There's always some, there needs to be some interplay with that, because students enroll for certain things. We might need to increase staffing here or there. If we see an increase in our elementary enrollment, we typically add sections, which means more teachers, so we would, we would, we're entering into that period now in the next few months. So, our budget planning process is part of our presentation. So, tonight, reviewing our revised budget, our projected budgets for the next couple of fiscal years. On February thirteenth, you'll act on the revised budget. You don't act on a projected budget at this point, you just act on the revision for fiscal year seventeen. Our staffing, planning, and our enrollment projections, that work is ongoing, it's, it's going on right now. We work with various stakeholders in the district, principals, department heads, to develop budgets. And then, in May, we will be back here to review the preliminary budget, and in, and we don't anticipate there being adjustments that have staffing ramifications, that's just a standard placeholder that we school districts do, but, and then in June, on June twelfth, we recommend our preliminary fiscal year eighteen budget to you for approval. But you will have seen it in May at our work study. Okay, anything else on the budget?
Wayne, just to skip back to the, to the expenditures, revenue and expenditures deal, detail, which would be, I guess, page seventy-three. Line, let's see here, line thirty-five, I believe it's thirty-five, yeah, under elementary, secondary, regular instruction, supplies and materials jumped up. I assume that's Chromebooks jumped up quite significantly. I'm...
A million of that is that Fund Twelve placement holder. We have to add in that student activity part, so the extra that million up top in the revenues is also put into the expenditures. So, that's the ball of that.
All right, any other questions? Ellen.
And I, just to clarify, when we're looking at line thirty-four, under elementary and secondary regular instruction, the purchase services, is that where our partnerships are? I think? That's where the partnerships are and stuff?
Like the sales and the arts?
Yes, okay, but then...
All right, other questions about the budget? Yeah, done.
So, Wayne, on, on page seventy-four, seventy-eight through eighty-five, which is the transportation piece? Twenty-fifteen looks like for purchase services? I'm assuming that's all, that's for student and all the transportation needs that, that are needed. I thought that, and we see that they're going, they're projected to be back up a little bit, an increase. I'm trying to figure out, I thought we had changed the way that was moving.
Yep, we've seen quite a bit of growth in our special ed cost and our homeless transportation costs. So, yeah, it's turning, it's turning back up for those two priorities.
And then, if I may with the follow-up, Janet?
Yep, absolutely.
Line eighty-three, the capital expenditures, is that the purchase of some new equipment that we needed to do? And then, so, we carried that into the twenty-seventeen, so the actual is three hundred and ten, is what we're looking at?
That's what we're basing for this current fiscal year, yeah. And then, last year, we, we did a three-six figure.
So, is that, do you know what that's actually purchasing?
Well, three, three standard buses, but it might be more than that, depending on what type of vehicle it is. Standard buses are around a hundred thousand dollars. The smaller buses are sixty or seventy. Vans are, you know, twenty-five to thirty.
Last year, we purchased, from my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and I apologize for interrupting, but last year, in twenty-sixteen, we purchased three buses?
Three or four.
Okay. Fine, so we're gonna purchase another three or four this year?
Right.
That's kind of in the plan of...
All right, any other questions? Kim?
Piggybacking on the question that Don had, going back to the transportation purchase services, Wayne. You had mentioned, you know, due to increased costs relative to special ed and homeless transportation. What, can you give a little more detail, what, I mean, what has changed there? I mean, are, have we just in gotten, I mean, are there mandates that have come down, or we have more students that are demanding or needing services? I mean, what?
Yep, we have more students that are being transported and special ed, and we had, we've seen quite an increase in our homeless population the last couple of years, and we're mandated to transport.
So, it's been that significant?
Including, I would imagine, some students that we pick up across district lines and then have to bus them into White Bear?
Yep.
Or bus them from White Bear to other districts, yeah?
Although those districts are responsible to come here, we go all over the metro.
Wow. All right, any other questions about the budget? Yeah, done.
Just one quick more question about the transportation. So, the top word, salaries, those are just for district employees?
Correct.
That's not including any services, the services piece are the salaries that we're paying inside of there, am I, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I figured, that's what I'm thinking here.
All right, other questions? All right, Wayne, you can proceed on.
All right, then at this point, we have a decision to make about how much you wanna go into this tonight. We can, part of what we've done is we've, we've gone to PTOs, we've gone to, we're going to staff meetings at this point. We don't do a formal presentation like this, but some of our talking points are, are things like our enrollment. We've talked about our facility study, our demographic study that's going, that's going on. Those are, are topics that fit into the discussion about the operating levy. So, that's new in terms of what you saw a couple of months ago. We've talked about our double A bond rating, and it was last affirmed in twenty-fifteen, and that's a big deal for us as a school district, because we're able to issue bonds at a very attractive interest rate. We talked about our fund balance policy, that's a good measure. We have a, a very healthy fund balance, and that we, we are currently operating under a balanced budget. So, we talk about those messages with our PTOs and with our staff members, and then the rest of this is essentially the presentation that we, we, we talked about a couple of months, or I guess it was a couple of months ago in November. And I don't know that we wanna go through that again. I, I do, I remember that we prefaced, we weren't gonna go through it in great detail that night, but then we ended up going, spending quite a bit of time on it. So, I, I feel like you had an opportunity to ask a lot of questions there. And this isn't the presentation that we would use when we're going to community groups. There's, this is too much into the weeds for that type of purpose. But it's important that as a school board, you, you begin to understand the issue and that you have an opportunity to see it several times. But, so let me jump to timeline. We can talk briefly about this. We have a, there's a few of us from cabinet who are attending a session in February, put on by Springstead and sponsored by M A S A. That work, just, just to help, help us start thinking about our operating levy. I know Marissa is our, and I and Dr. Lovett have already begun, we're developing our communications plan and getting document, internal documents ready. So, that work is underway. We have, we'll have a, a survey that'll go out in April. It'll be finalized in March, it'll go out in April. That's been a standard piece that the White River Lake School District has done in the past, help us gauge where, where our community is at. So, that work is underway with, with Springstead, and we anticipate that in July, we would have a long... And we anticipate that in July, we would have a long discussion, a more in-depth discussion about what that operating levy is going to look like. Potentially at that point, or in August, make a decision, a final decision about amount and the time period and all that. So, so that's, one of my slides is missing. It's November seventh, 2017 is the election day, but, so we're marching forward. So are there any questions about where we're at with operating levy planning?
I did ask Jody to include in the packet, and it's in at the very end, the brochure from the Minnesota School Boards Association, which gives us all the do's and don'ts of school board member participation in kind of the politics of an operating levy, either renewal or increase. And probably in short, the most important thing is that if we are acting with our school board member hats on, we're limited to exactly what Dr. Lovett, Dr. Kasmercheck, any of the cabinet, any of the teachers can do. And that is just solely presenting information, pure information to the public or to other groups about the operating levy coming up on the ballot. We can't be doing any advocacy work. If anybody in the school board does want to become involved in any advocacy for the levy, it would have to be done in a purely individual, non-school board member capacity. You can't use any school district resources. You can't use your ISB six-two-four email account, et cetera. But I would encourage all of us at a minimum to be involved with Dr. Lovett, Dr. Kasmercheck, and anyone else who's involved in those informational meetings with the chambers, with city councils, with community groups, to get the information out about the upcoming levy. Anything else on the levy or the budget? All right, thank you once again, Dr. Kasmercheck. Mary, you're welcome anytime. We love seeing you here. All right, our last agenda item, we'll call for a closed session. We have some issues to discuss regarding labor negotiations. So I will entertain a motion to move into closed session. Once we get that motion, in a second, we'll move up to room two oh one. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wilson. I'll second that. Let's meet upstairs in room two oh one in five minutes. Thank you.